Thank you. We're still waiting for two board members to join. I just noticed we don't have the meeting minutes on the this agenda to review and approve, so we should catch it at the next meeting. The ones that you sent out.
Yes, we will. On the 27th, we will.
Okay.
I got it.
Carol, you want to reach out to Taylor? And Taylor, would you reach out to Renee?
Renee is here.
Yay. Okay, why don't we? Why haven't you? No, there I am. Why don't we get started? Welcome to the Town of Belmont Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday evening, February 6th. Meeting timeframe is generally about two hours. We don't have much in terms of applications, but we do have the co-chairs of the MBTA Advisory Committee presenting an update to us as they will at every board meeting we have from now until, I think, April 2nd, when they intend to transition and hand over their recommendations to us. So, we'll start with case number 24-02, waiver to erect a sign. If you are here, or 30 Church Street, for the sign, please raise your hand. Neely Sullivan. If someone can promote Sullivan. And Ara, can you tell us why this application is coming in front of the board, so the public understands?
Yes. You can give me one minute, please.
I just unmuted myself. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great.
If I may have a minute, please?
Yes.
So, any alteration of a sign is allowed by special permit by the Board of Appeals unless the main sign is remaining and only the signage on the frame of the sign changes, then under section 5.2.2, the bylaw allows, under section 5.2.7, the bylaw allows a waiver to be granted to the applicants to change the signage on the main sign frame itself. And in this case, they do have a sign frame, but they want to change the signage of each individual tenant on that sign. And that's why they're here. They're requesting a waiver.
Yeah, so this is Neely Sullivan. I'm the leasing director for Acton Management. 30 Church Street is our building. So, we do, as Ara said, Ara, is that how you pronounce your name?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there is currently a pylon there, as Ara mentioned. It only currently allows opportunities for signage for two of our businesses, the Watertown Savings Bank and Fitness Together, which are on the first floor of the building. But as you may know, we have many businesses on the second and third floor as well. It's something we've been thinking about for years. And we feel it's just a value add for our current tenants, since they don't have any signage currently. And in terms of filling vacancies, it's definitely something that's appealing to prospective tenants to be able to have their signage out on the pylon, where, you know, cars and pedestrians pass by frequently. So, we had Alpha Graphics, a local print company, design the, you know, how the sign would look. And it basically just allows, you know, whoever many businesses are in the building to have a allotted slot on the sign.
So, if you have a picture, if you have a presentation or an application package, you can go through it. That's great. Thank you.
So, it's not really, as you can see, yeah, it's not really, it's just literally what Fitness Together did, but it's just expanding it below, below that. So, it's hopefully not, you know, too arish or too obtrusive.
Is that lit up? Is it backlit?
I don't think we would, I don't think we would do lighting for nighttime.
So, you wouldn't uplight it or backlight it?
I, most of the businesses on second and third floor are not nighttime. I, I don't know. I mean, is that an option? I mean, what? What would, you know, what would the town say about? I, I think initially it was no. The answer was no. But if it's an option, you know, I could talk with the landlord to see if that's something he wants to, obviously be more of a cost incurred by us for the electricity, I'm assuming.
By the way, I'll just throw out there, I think the zoning bylaw is very specific about what kind of lighting is allowed. So, I think you can just reference that.
Okay.
Any? Then what all, when you do, when you say logo of the business, is it all going to be the same font? Or you're going to use different fonts and different logos in representing the businesses?
I think we would allow the business, the businesses would essentially have to pay. I mean, we would pay for the, this sign part to be erected, but then the individual businesses would have to pay for however they want their lettering to be. You know, they probably each have very specific fonts and colors. Obviously, everything would have to be approved by us, but I think we would want to allow them the freedom to choose. Unless, again, unless that's not something the town would allow, and in which case, we would tell them it would have to be, you know, would have to be all more uniform.
Carol?
Thank you. Are the, is it 10 spots that are shown there? Is that the total number of additional units that are available in the building?
There are, there are a few more, but the, the, those offices, there are some offices that are just really, really small. So, we probably wouldn't offer signage for, you know, like a 200 square foot, 100 square foot office. So, there may be one or two more, but these would be more for our, you know, our primary tenants on the second and third floor.
Okay. And do you have the dimensions of, of what is proposed? Just so we can know, like, how far down does it come? I'm very familiar with the sign. I went by the site and everything like that and always support promoting local businesses.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Just looking for a few more specifics.
Yeah, I, I agreed. I think, you know, anything we can do to help businesses, especially small businesses that are struggling nowadays and have been throughout the pandemic, I think is for the betterment of your community and the betterment for everyone, really. But the dimensions should be on the application that I submitted. Ara, is that part of that proposal?
I'm sorry, I was muted. No, the application that you guys submitted is the denial letter and the application. And this, you know, the main application of the waiver itself. Or not on this application.
Okay, there it is. Size of the length would be 72 inches to height, to approximately 96 inches. And then obviously broken up into 10 slots within that.
And so, it's a white background as shown?
I mean, that's the way, yes, that's the way Alpha Graphics designed it. That's how we approved it. So, it would be assumed white background, which I would think would be probably the best background for businesses to put their logos onto. But I don't know, I mean, if somebody were to say, I want a black background or blue background, would that be frowned upon? Or, you know, again.
I think we're looking for some form of uniformity and consistency. We don't want it to be a hodgepodge of, of logos and different fonts and what have you. And I guess the next question I have for Ara is, was it 10 individual spaces? Do we consider 10 individual signs, or are we just giving carte blanche?
I mean, if, if you give the carte blanche, which is like, you know, for the total signage, which is 72 inches by 96, then it would be like, if they have different tenants at different times, they can remove one, replace with a new one. But if you want them to come to the board every time they have a new tenant to apply for a sign, to replace on this frame itself,
Okay.
then that would be a different matter.
Yeah, I think if that were the case, we would, we wouldn't do it. You know, to have to come back every time to do this. I mean, you know, if you allow it, us to erect it, and then we say to the tenants, listen, you can go in front of the board and you can do this, but, you know, I don't think we want to be responsible for coming back to the board every time a new tenant wants to put their signage up in one of the slots.
Do you, I agree. Is it possible to, well, I don't know, let me see what the other board member is saying. Taylor?
Carol has her hand up. I think she has another question. I'm, I'm good for now.
Carol?
Thank you. I do have another question. Do we know how high it is off-ground level, how high the bottom of the sign is?
I think it, it would be, there are like shrubs there, I believe. And I think it would be, it would be above the shrub level. It's basically the way he designed it was high enough that pedestrians and cars can see it, but not low enough where it would be blocked by like shrubs or, you know, landscaping. You know, the exact inches above the ground, I don't, I don't know that, but certainly something I could get back to you on.
As on your application, 72 inches. If you scroll back to what we were just looking at.
That, well, that's. That was the height of the sign.
Yeah, that's not 72 inches above the ground.
The sign. Okay.
I took that as the white part where it says logo 10 different times. That, that's 72 by, what was it, 36?
Yes.
Which seems, seems fine. My other question is, what would be in the spaces when it's not being occupied by a tenant?
It would be blank.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think my thought is just looking at, you know, when a business goes out and the sign kind of gets flipped inside out, it's, it's not always the most, most becoming. So, if we could just have some specificity of that it'll be, you know, plain white or whatever color you wanted to, and the white background there now.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that we know kind of like what, what would we be approving.
We would be happy to take out the, you know, a lot of these tenants are long-term tenants, so the hope is that they stay there. And we're not swapping things out every, you know, year. But we'd be happy to, you know, if a tenant leaves, we'd be happy to take out the signage and just have it be a plain white background.
I don't want to make this more complicated than it needs to be. But you know who the tenants are. Is it possible for the graphics firm to create a rendering that shows us all of their logos or names, so we can actually see what it looks like? Unless other board members feel that's not relevant and we're ready to move forward on this. I just.
So, sorry, I think what our plan was is, you know, if this sign gets approved with the 10 individual slots, would be then to approach our tenants and say, you know, some of you, many of you have asked for signage opportunities in the past. If you're still interested, here's what's gonna, here's what's gonna happen with the pylon. Here's what the design looks like. Now, you know, it's your, you have the opportunity to pay for signage. There may be some businesses that don't want to do it. But, you know, the ones that do take advantage of that.
Do you have at least 10 businesses that have expressed interest in actually paying for signage?
I, I don't know over the, I mean, I just started this position three years ago, so I, I don't know in the history of however long the building's been there and tenants who've been there for longer than that have expressed that from the outset. But there have been tenants who move in who say, what's the, you know, what's the situation with signage? And the only thing we can tell them is, well, you have a directory inside the building and, you know, I guess sometimes.
My only concern, like empty storefronts in Belmont, is that you have 10 spaces and two tenants or three tenants decide to pay for the signage, and now we have seven, seven empty spaces for however how long. And it just would look funny. It doesn't, it doesn't represent well for what we're trying to achieve in terms of vibrancy and engagement. So, I would ask maybe if you go back to the tenants and say, hey, I speak for myself and other board members can speak on their vote. The planning board is inclined to approve the signage, but before we do, they like to have an understanding if we have two people interested or 10. And here's what the costs are. Get their initial commitment, kind of like a letter of intent or something, and then come back to us and say, we can fill all 10 on day one, and they'll be filled for a year or two or three. And, and I, I think that, that would be more palpable for me as opposed to just saying, here's 10 spaces, hope that two or three or four or five agree to pay for it, and then have a bunch of blank spaces.
Okay, yeah. I, I can, so, I mean, I guess, let's say we have five come back to us and say, we want, we're, you know, we're ready to plunk down the, whatever, $200, $100 it is to put our logo up there. Is that enough? Does it have to be all 10? Can it be five? I mean, really can't.
I don't think it needs to be all 10. Let's say you only get six. You know, the way that this thing can be built, you can possibly build it where you can do six right now, and then you can add as you go. You can add blocks of two or blocks of, of four, depending on who expressed an interest.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I mean, I'd have to check in with the sign company to see if that's something that they can just add on, or if you're gonna, you know, if you're, if we're gonna, if we want this design, can they just build two, and then another two, and then another two, and then another two, and then another two? I'm just not sure how it, how it works.
It's like Tetris.
Yeah.
Yes, if I may. This is Renee. So, I was just looking at the arrow image of the actual sign. And honestly, I feel like if we fit two signs in a row, the font is going to be too small to be really legible from the street. Because I was looking at the Fitness Together sign with the phone number at the bottom, and that phone number is already pretty small to be, you know, to be caught from far away. So, my, my, my feeling is fitting two logos in one row might be too tight. So, maybe you could do like one, one row per sign. And that way, you don't have to worry about, you know, how many, you don't, you have to get two logos or two signs every, every time. Add on to it one line at a time. And, you know, maximally, maybe we can approve up to like eight or 10. And depending on how many tenants are willing, are willing to pay or, you know, get their signs out there, you can just add on to the bottom.
Yeah, I, I, I expressed that to the sign designer when we, I met him out there. I said, you know, obviously, you have to make them, the individual slots big enough so that, I mean, I'm not expecting cars, you know, I don't know, 200 feet away or pedestrians 200 feet away to be able to look at the sign and see like they could see a Fitness Together or Watertown Savings Bank. But people who are close enough, who, you know, drive by or walk by would be able to see it. So, that's essentially what he created. You know, I, I, he's the expert, so I just said, make sure that the spaces are big enough that the logo is at least, you know, visible.
Yeah, I think my, my advice would be try to come up with a couple actual signs or logos and just play with it. You know, maybe come to the actual sign and just see how it actually presents itself if you put the business logo on it, to see if it is legible. Because my feeling is when I was looking at the image, I was like, hmm, it might be too small if you put two signs here, because it's actually not as big or wide as it shows on this picture on the screen. So, yeah, that, I mean, I just, just my, my, my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great suggestion. I think we're, I, I am a component of signage, and it, it sounds like a good idea. We certainly want to promote the businesses and give them the support that they need to succeed and thrive. So, Renee's idea is a good one, and the signage company can maybe speak about that and give yourself an opportunity to speak with the tenants to make sure you have tenants that would pay for it. One other question I have is, what is the condition of the existing pylon structure itself? As in, is it steel painted, is it painted steel and is it flaking or? What condition is it in? No?
It, it seems to, from the last time I, I was out there and saw it, it seemed to be in very fine condition. I, I could try to like pull up a picture on my phone. But yeah, I mean, it, it, I believe it would be steel just painted over in black. See. Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. Yeah, the condition of the pylon is, is, is fine. I mean, there may be like a couple of little minor, minor chips in the paint.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
But from the photo I'm looking at here on my phone, it, it looks to be in, in pretty decent condition.
Okay. Any other board members? Taylor?
Yeah, I just, to reiterate Jeff's earlier point, I think the board's primary concern here is creating perception of vacancy with the number of sign slots that are being created. So, I think if you can come back with some kind of confirmation from your tenants that like a certain number wants to participate in this, I think that would be the most helpful thing that could move this process along.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll put out a survey to them. I, you know, I know in the past it's been something. I mean, that's part of the reason we brought this to you guys. So, I'll check in with them again and let them know what the cost would be. I would hate to, you know, spend all this money, even the submission of the applications and then the design of it all, and then for it to all fall through. So, you know, maybe if they, if some businesses squawk, maybe we can cover the cost of, you know, and then for future tenants, we let them know, you know, it, it's going to be at your cost. Because typically, we don't pay for signage. It ends up becoming a big cost for us, for all of our tenants and all of our.
We got it. Any other, any other comments or questions from the board members? Okay, I make a motion for case number 24-02, waiver to erect a sign to continue. To, is two weeks enough, Neely, for you to do what you need to do? Do you need longer?
Nope, that's fine.
To, yes, Mara?
My apologies. It's three weeks. It's on the 27th, on the 20th. It's a vacation week, and the next meeting is on the 27th. That would give them three weeks.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion for case number 24-02, waiver to erect a sign to continue the case to our next board meeting on the 27th.
All right.
All those in favor? We get the vote. There we go. This is my hand. We're all in favor. Anyone opposed? Staying? Okay. Next on the agenda, the MBTA Advisory Committee co-chairs will be giving us an update. They will be giving us an update at each one of our board meetings leading up to April 2nd. So, the co-chairs, Rachel and Roy, if you, we can promote them, please. That would be great. And we promote, oh, great, thank you. By the way, I, I forgot to do introductions, so why don't we just do a round robin of that real quick? Jeff Birnbaum, Chair of the Planning Board.
Carol Berberian, Vice Chair.
Renee Gold, Planning Board Member.
There, Donna, Planning Board Member.
Andy Osborne, Associate Member.
Taylor Yates, Planning Board Member.
Great. Chris?
Mr. Bryan, Director of Planning and Building.
And Ara?
Hi, Richard Inspector of Buildings.
Great, and thank you for Belmont Media to, for recording all of this. And do we have a minutes taker yet, or is that currently still yours?
No, she's, she's an attendee. She's here. And I believe she is taking the minutes. Yes. She is here.
Yep, Michelle.
She's there, and actually attendees, yes.
What's her name?
Michelle Blanchett.
Okay, thank you, Michelle Blanchett, for taking the minutes. We'll, we'll speak clearly. Okay, Rachel and Roy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Rachel Heller, a member of the Housing Trust and co-chair of the MBTA, MBTA Community Advisory Committee. Sorry. So, thank you for providing us with the opportunity to give an update on our work. We are in the process right now of a community engagement. We have a series of meetings, January, February, March, where we are working with the community, getting ideas, presenting information. And all of that is helping to shape the work that we do as a committee. Our meeting on January 29th was at the Beach Street Center. It was a full house, and we had a really great presentation by our technical assistance providers, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. That night was really about level setting. So, our consultant, Josh Fiala, laid out the information about the law, Belmont's approach, and we spent a lot of time on questions and answers, which was really helpful to hear from people who've been part of the process the whole time and others who are really just getting involved. After that meeting, we spent some time as a committee going through different options that MAPC has drafted for us based on the law, proximity to transit and businesses. We had five scenarios we were considering. We are narrowing that down. We have narrowed that down to three. And we will be bringing that out to a community meeting on February 15th. That's next week at 7 o'clock at the Beach Street Center. And that is going to be an opportunity for people to really engage with these scenarios, share their thoughts on the locations. And that will really, once we can get a sense of the geographies that, that people are really getting behind and, and meet the law, then the committee can further refine it. We can work on heights. We can, you know, really put in all of the different, more of the details that are needed. We'll come back to the public again in March to share our progress and to continue to hear more feedback as we then work with our technical assistance providers on the drafting of the zoning language and really putting that whole package together for, to hand off to the planning board. I'll turn over to Roy, who I know has a lot to add.
Good evening, everybody. Roy Upstein, Co-Chair of the MBTA Communities Advisory Committee and Chair of the Select Board. Let me offer, I guess, some complimentary comments to what Rachel had just said. You know, we gave you an update at your first meeting in January. Let me tell you in a little bit more detail what we've, what concretely has happened since that time. The committee has been spending a good deal of time discussing affordability and density or total unit count. The committee voted in the middle of January, so after our update, not to proceed with 40R. So, the concept right now for affordability is to take the existing inclusionary zoning bylaw and adapt it to whatever is determined as the units and the configurations of 3A. So, that's where affordability stands. Regarding unit count, MAPC, the consultant, presented five scenarios in a meeting last week or the week before. It was a presentation dated January 25th in any event. So, let me just tell you where they landed. Making different assumptions about location, ranging from a single district around Waverly Square to districts just around Waverly Square and. Square to districts just around Waverly Square and Belmont Center, to other scenarios where districts were defined in additional parts of town principally around, on Brighton Street near the tracks, on Concord Avenue near Bright Road, and also on Pleasant Street as Pleasant Street approaches Route 2. MAPC came up with the following, and let me just read the numbers to you. Well, five scenarios. The first one had 1,706 units. The second one had 3,341. The third one had 2,151. The fourth one had 3,034. And the fifth one had 1,748. The committee recommended abandoning the first and the last scenario because one of them was, I think, Waverly only. And the second one was Belmont Center plus, I think, Upper Pleasant Street, and that was considered not to be sufficiently, in the first place, not sufficiently geographic, geographically inclusive, but then secondly, it kind of missed a lot of the other considerations that the committee had identified for 3A, like potential economic development opportunities and so forth. So that leaves alternatives 2, 3, and 4, where the unit counts ranged from the 2,151 to MAPC provided the underlying data that is used in the compliance model. And the, so that contains information such as the, the exact parcel, the density in terms of number of units assumed for that parcel. The square footage, and they have some specific assumptions about square footage devoted to the building footprint as opposed to parking area and open space and so forth. All of that is in a spreadsheet that's been provided, not just to the committee, it's actually a publicly available document, so anybody can take it. That actually allows both the committee and members of the public to run their own scenarios. So it actually gives a lot of additional flexibility. I've studied that spreadsheet over a lot since last week, and it's, you know, my day job was doing expert witness work, and this is kind of in that spirit of really examining quantitative analyses to see what's embedded in them. It resulted in a number of questions that I discussed with Chris yesterday, and we ended up summarizing them in a pretty lengthy memo, or I should say a detailed memo, that went to MAPC this morning, and they promised they would give us written answers by Friday. And the purpose of the memo was to get further information from MAPC on certain assumptions in the model that were quite important that actually I just didn't understand. They seemed technically contradictory in a variety of ways, so hopefully they will clarify that. It also embodied a number of assumptions that had, to my mind, problematic applicability to Belmont, and I wanted to know their rationale for making those assumptions. So for one example, is for the south side of Concord Avenue. So that's starting from the Unitarian Church and running down the street in the direction of the library. That was all zoned as mandatory mixed use, which did not seem appropriate to me, so I asked them about the logic behind that. There's another issue which was only, only dawned on me over the weekend regarding Belmont Housing Authority properties. You know, there was a lot of focus when this committee started on trying to include Sherman Gardens, which is on Sycamore Street. To include Sherman Gardens in the zoning because they're planning to redevelop it. In fact, the plans are reasonably far advanced. And we thought, since it's going to need rezoning anyway, why not just make it part of 3A, and the units would count toward the required unit count. It just dawned on me, and so that was our assumptions for, since the beginning. It dawned on me over the weekend that Sherman Gardens is a BHA property with age restrictions. And Gloria Leipzig from the Housing Trust told me over the weekend that when it's redeveloped, the plan at this point is to have 125 age-restricted units and 10 units that would be generally available to families and so forth. So the question in my mind then is, is Sherman Gardens on those terms actually eligible for 3A at all? Because one of the repeated criteria in the 3A program is that there be no age restrictions. So that's, that's something that we need to get clarification on, and that's one of the questions to MAPC. A similar issue, so, okay, so that's, let me keep going, if I can give me, just bear with me. There was a lot of discussion in the committee and from members of the public about whether or not Star Market should be included. And not just Star Market, but also Belmont Car Wash, because those are two busy, commercially zoned sectors, and the only way they could remain commercial in 3A is if they were a mixed use or mandatory mixed use. It became problematic. I think the, about, a scenario in which the owners of Star Market hypothetically would sell off the whole supermarket and replace it with an apartment building seemed undesirable. So the, at the direction of the committee at the last meeting, MAPC was directed to redefine the scenarios that they've presented so far, to not include Star Market on the Car Wash, but in, to achieve what's called compliance by extending the Waverly District down Trappello Road, actually opposite the Star Market, as far as getting even with the development at, on Olmsted Drive. So it would be a kind of a long snake of a district where you would extend down Trappello Road on the south side of the street. It's then allowed to jump the district over to pick up Olmsted Drive, and then continue on that side of Trappello Road until it included Waverly Oaks, which is the BHA property at the intersection of Mill Street. So that was, that was how it was left at the meeting last week, but the same conversation with Gloria clarified for me that Waverly Oaks is also an age-restricted property, and if it were redeveloped in the future, it in all likelihood would remain age-restricted, which raises the question of whether it's proper or whether the property is even eligible to be part of 3A. And then there's a number of other issues that I identified that are in the memo, and there's some total of all that is that there's a fair amount of technical review of the scenarios that's necessary to even figure out what works and what doesn't work. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing is, the way I've been thinking about 3A, you know, I've said it from the beginning, I think it has actually genuine potential for creating a development path for some properties in Belmont that are fairly sizable by Belmont standards, and I think most people would agree are underutilized today. And that's guided a lot of my thinking about how this program could best be implemented. And of course, another dimension of that is building not more housing and more affordable housing units. So that's, that's the package where you try to strike a balance with all of these considerations, plus the locational issue. And I would add to it the consideration for giving Belmont Housing Authority flexibility, but I think now that flexibility would not be in Sherman Gardens so much as Belmont Village, which is going to be redeveloped sooner or later. And their thought process is to build a pretty good-sized building on what's now the parking lot on Pearson Road. And the 3A zoning could actually be very helpful for the Housing Authority. But I just wanted to conclude by saying that when MAPC did their first modeling efforts in December, you know, I think everybody is aware that the unit counts were on the high side, like around 5,000, in a town that only has, you know, maybe 10,000 housing units, but maybe 8,000 structures. And MAPC has been pursuing a variety of strategies to bring that unit count down, and that's what resulted in the numbers that I just read to you before. What I wanted to conclude with is that it seemed appropriate to me for the planning board and also for town meeting to have a sense of the full spectrum of possibility. So we know you can zone for 5,000 units, but the lower bound was never really explored that carefully. And the number that's been used a lot is 1,632 is the lower bound, because that's the required number of units that's laid out in the, in the 3A program for Belmont, because they had a target number of units for each town. That's true up to a point. What that does not take into consideration is the fact that when the 3A zoning has mandatory mixed use, the units, there are two things from that. In the mandatory mixed use, the land area associated with such a building does not count towards the required land area for achieving compliance. The units, however, do count, but they count in a way that I, for one, hadn't sufficiently appreciated. You don't just get credit for the units in the mandatory mixed-use buildings. Those units actually act as an offset to the required number of units. So in fact, if you had a significant amount of mandatory mixed use, and we understand the appeal of mixed use in many of our commercial areas, those units actually serve to lower the total number, total number of required units from 1,632 to some lower number, depending on how many units are created. So I thought that's worthy of some further study, so that's my own personal focus right now with the compliance model is to see just what the true lower limit is. That also satisfies the other compliance criteria, and that would actually then give the planning board kind of a, a complete range of alternatives to consider as you go on to make your final recommendation. And those are my comments for tonight.
All right, thank you. Rachel has her hand up, and then I'll go to other board members.
Thank you. Thank you, Roy, for the very thorough continuation where we are at this point. I just wanted to add in, and we can talk about it more at our committee meeting on Friday. With regards to the zoning and public housing, having, consisting of senior housing, what the law requires is that the underlying zoning, so the zoning itself must be suitable for families with children. What gets built upon the zoning can actually be a range of projects. It can include senior housing, it can include, you know, a range of bedroom sizes, but if the zoning itself is not prohibiting the diversity of housing. So I'm Sherman Gardens, you know, we can talk about it more on Friday, but it will, it can certainly work if the underlying zoning changed. And also, does everyone understand with the commercial, if we did a commercial requirement, it's a 25% offset? So 25% of the units zoned for could be in a required mixed use. There's additional rules that we, you know, if we go down this road, we can certainly share with you all, or if you want to know more about them. And that's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Claire?
I also, since Roy was talking about the number of units, I think, I mean, in my mind, we've been trying to lower the number, but my concern about lowering them too far down is that when the state reviewed Salem and Lexington's final review, they took out 10% of Salem's and 30% of Lexington's. So, you know, there's, there's something risky about cutting it to, you know, 1,632, you know, plus a couple more, or that, you know, going to that level. And, you know, we, we've heard people talk, in our meetings, we've heard from the, get it down as low as possible, to we want as many as possible. So we've sort of heard the gamut over and over again in our meetings, but I think as a group, we're trying to present something that's passable to town meeting, and we understand the constraints, but. So Chris asked a very interesting question to MAPC, which was, say we present a loan number, it goes to, to the state, they lop off 15%, are we then allowed to come back and change the numbers or fiddle with it for our final one? And I, I think Josh was saying yes, but I'm not sure anyone's done it yet, so I don't know if that's actually an option. So I was hoping to get more clarification.
Thank you. Taylor?
Yeah, so Claire, I'm glad you talked about that, because that's sort of top of mind for me, too, is like the total unit count, because I think of all the numbers in this, that's the most consequential. And I think it'll be of great interest to the planning board when we pick this up in April. So I'll just throw a few things out there, and then I'd love, I'd love if we actually had a discussion tonight about, like, how many units the planning board is envisioning, even if it's a range or a ballpark. But it sounds like there's a few things out there. There's this number 1,632, which is like, I guess, the, it's like the baseline requirement. There's been talk of a buffer of maybe like 10%, but maybe it needs to be bigger because towns have gotten more than 10% lopped off their final total. And then the third piece is there's this commercial offset, which may take that baseline number and bring it down lower, if I understood Roy correctly. I think if we talk about the simple version, the number that I, that, that made the most sense to me coming into this meeting was 1,800, because it was 1,632, add 10%, round to the nearest hundred, and you have a nice round number that is, I think it comes to like a 15% increase in zone four housing in the, the town, which would be the town, which would be the most, I mean, that'd be the single largest increase in housing in that I think any planning board ever passed. But I'd love to hear actually like other planning board members thoughts on is 1,800 or thereabouts a palatable number to you, or is there a different number that we should be thinking about? And I'll caveat it with like, until we really know what the, what the commercial offset does, we won't really know of the final number. But I think the board needs to at least start discussing this.
Thank you. Carol.
Thank you, Taylor. I, I do feel that my thinking is very much in line with what you just talked about with the total unit count. And my question is with the three scenarios that are currently on the table, what are the total unit numbers in each of those three scenarios? And could those be sent to the planning board? I feel that it's important that we could be part of the conversation that's being had right now as we're getting closer to the point that the recommendations will be made, just so that way we can have a full understanding why the decisions are being made the way that they are, so we can really go forward with as much knowledge as possible. And thank you, Roy, for looking into the commercial piece. That is very interesting. I look forward to hearing more about that.
Well, in terms of the unit counts for the scenarios as developed by MAPC thus far, I think we should just send every member of the planning board, the presentation that was sent to the committee a week or so ago, because that that has that kind of detail.
Right. Someone had mentioned, I don't know if it was you or Rachel, that you had narrowed it down to three scenarios that you're looking at now. So of those three, could someone just share what the, just the sheer numbers, what the total unit number is for each of those three scenarios?
Yeah, that's what I read at the outset. Hold on just a second. So the three MAPC scenarios that pass that initial cut. Wait, Chris, do you have it open just to, the numbers are 3,341, 2,151, and 3,034, but to see what that actually means in terms of geographic coverage and all that, you'd have to look at the maps that are included in the presentations, because they're quite different.
Jeff, can I ask a follow up?
Go ahead.
Can either of you share the reason that the numbers are focused so much about compliance at this time?
Well, I don't know honestly how MAPC chose these five scenarios, other than some very general guidance from the committee at the outset, that we were interested generally in Waverly Belmont Center, Brighton Street around the tracks, possibly Concord Avenue near Bright Road and possibly Upper Pleasant Street. They, I'm not aware that they came back to us for any further guidance. They, they just went off and made their own assumptions. And the it's, what you see for unit count is a mix of just geographic spread and how many parcels are included. And the density of development for each parcel. And the numbers add up surprisingly quickly. Now, the, remember in 3A, there's a requirement that a structure be at least three parts, three units on a lot. And just to visualize this, if you take a a typical block, say around in Waverly, that's mostly two family. If you had a, the average lot down there is about 5,000 square feet. So if it was all two families, that would come out to just doing the math, eight, you know, in acres, about 42,000 square feet. That's roughly 16 or 17 units per acre. The density assumed in the modeling is clustered around two main values. One is about 30 units per acre. And the other is about 70 units per acre. So by assuming what MAPC is calling building typologies, you're putting a lot of density on lots that in Belmont historically have had two or maybe a three family. And now they're putting five, six and, and more units on that lot. So that's why the unit counts are getting so high.
Sarah.
So two things, at, at the end of the last meeting, we started discussing working on the typologies and the density of the typologies, because one of our core values in this was to spread, spread the zoning around town. And so everything didn't all end up in Waverly, which is what option 1A was, you know, the minimum number. We can fit them all in Waverly, but that is not, I mean, we heard from everybody, that's not the right solution. And so we're trying to be more equitable and spread units around town. I think, so we have the typologies, but we also have this other pesky thing that Roy, you may be trying to avoid talking about, which is the contiguity issue, which has required us to make some areas bigger than maybe we would like them in order to meet this criteria. And since Roy is the expert at articulating contiguity, I would let, I would defer to him to do that.
Well, as I say, as I say in my math class, the answer is obvious and there's no need to get into it. I sent you all my memo on contiguity. So let me just say, it's not at all obvious. The language in the guidelines is is painfully poorly written, and you have to kill yourself to understand what they're saying. But the upshot of it is that there's a certain number, eight, Belmont needs, let me put it this way. However, many acres Belmont eventually decides to zone as 3A acreage. 50% of that acreage has to be in a single blob. It doesn't have to be a nice round shaped blob, but it has to be what they call contiguous parcels. So you know, the, the shape of it can be almost anything, but there can't be any gaps. So you, you can't have a district and then jump over a couple of blocks and say the district is continuing over here. That doesn't work. Everything has to be that, that one parcel has to, the contiguous parcel has to be all abutting parcels with the allow, with the understanding that you're allowed to cross a street to continue the district. So that's acreage. And then you're free to define additional districts if you want. And there, the requirement is just that any additional district has to be at least five acres in size. So that, that's I think a correct statement of contiguity. And, and, and the other thing, of course, is that that single big district has to be within half a mile of a commuter rail station, whether Waverly or Belmont Center. The issue that we were not clear about for a while is we, we thought because we had two commuter rail stations that it was okay to split the acreage, as long as if you had some of the acreage around Waverly and some of the acreage around Belmont Center, that you could add them together to satisfy this contiguity requirement. That turns out to be not true. You have to pick you have to make a single large district, then, and then decide, is it going to be close to the Waverly Station or the Belmont Center Station? You have to pick one or the other. But then you're free to define additional districts. So the then other factors enter into it, but the that contiguity requirement basically means that you cannot define districts that are equal sized geographically. And for the, the upshot of it is that the Waverly District is turning out to be somewhat larger than Belmont Center. Belmont Center is still a pretty good size, but the fact remains that Waverly is somewhat larger. And I think that's how it's going to end up in the end because of additional factors that enter into this.
Thank you. Rachel.
Building off of Roy's and Thayer's comments, a few things. One, just how we arrived at the scenarios that MAPC has presented. It's actually come from a lot of different places. This committee actually had a public meeting back in June, which was the first time we actually did some mapping exercises with people to get a sense of where multifamily zoning could really fit in based on the law's requirements, where we have transit, where we have commercial areas. We also, the committee also started with what was in the Housing Production Plan, as you all know, from the planning boards having approved the Housing Production Plan. We just completed that last spring. And that is all, that it was a place where a lot of the community was also giving input into where we could have more multifamily, because multifamily is obviously where you can get the level of density to achieve the affordability that, that we are seeking to achieve through our Housing Production Plan. So some of the, the actual areas stem actually back from the Housing Production Plan and the community meetings we had in June. The MAPC did come up with a scenario where it was closer to the requirement. So it was 1,706 units. However, that scenario was if it was only in Waverly Square. Because that is where you could get, you could hit all of the requirements of the contiguity, being near transit. As Thayer was saying, because we have multiple different goals and principles that we're using to help make us decision, to help us make decisions, having it only in one spot in town was not a desired outcome. So once you start to bring in other areas, you're now changing the, all of the math that goes into this. So 50% of the land, as Roy was explaining, needs to be in one area. The more that you start to add to make it more equitable across town, it's going to change those numbers. So that, that's important to raise. I also want to mention, when it comes to the offset for commercial, we're not actually reducing the number of units. So make sure that's clear. It's just how many units would be counted that are above commercial in a required scenario, rather than if we incentivized it. So, you know, our number is still 1,632 that we're required to have. If we chose to do a commercial requirements anywhere up to 25% of our total, so that'd be 408 units, could be part of a required commercial or required mixed use area. You can also get there to the mixed use there incentive. So I just want to make sure that that's all clear. And we can certainly hand over the deck. You know, that MAPC gave to us. So you can see on a nice little chart, they put in all the requirements we need to meet and a couple of different options and why the numbers, give a sense of why the numbers range so much.
Thank you. Where did the 1,632 units come from?
That comes from Belmont being a commuter rail community. And so the state broke down the communities into different types. There's rapid transit, commuter rail and commuter rail adjacent, and then small community that's adjacent. The commuter rail communities all have a 15% growth in zoning, so that 15% growth over what our current number of homes are in town, that we would zone for 15% for.
How many homes are in town?
Well, it's interesting. There's actually under the latest, so under the latest census, those numbers were done in 2020, but just came out recently. We're actually at about 10,800 and I forgot the was that 10,800 or what?
10,882.
Thank you. So it's either based off of that, and we'll do the math quickly, or it was based off of the numbers that were from the last census, because the guidelines were coming out, I believe, just around when everything was being recalculated.
And I assume there's no differentiation between what type of housing that is?
No, it's total number of houses.
It's just dwelling units, Jeff. It's all, it's just dwelling units.
Dwelling units. Okay. What I like, Taylor.
Sir, yeah, I just wanted to circle back on like my earlier question. I still feel like I would love to hear from the other planning board members, like what they think an appropriate number of total units are. Because again, I do think that is by far the most consequential number in, in this exercise. And if we don't state an opinion, I feel like we're doing a service to the advisory committee. Or really, you know, yeah.
Okay, I'll start. I think, and I've said it from the last meeting, that we should look for minimum compliance. I'm okay with the buffer. We talked about 1,800 units and rounding off. I believe that because I don't think we should constrain, limit, or handcuff ourselves to this zoning act. And I think we should comply with it in a minimum basis. That makes most sense. I believe most sense is Waverly Square and Belmont Center in terms of what I consider was called a trans oriented type of development. That's what I consider this to be. So that's my position. Carol.
I agree. I think that the focus should be on compliance for right now with also looking to the future for additional zoning opportunities that we can do as a town. So that way Belmont maintains a greater sense of control over the zoning that can promote the other goals that have been really well articulated through this process.
Renee.
Yep. Thank you, Jeff and Carol. I think it's very well said. I think I'm on the same page with you guys. We definitely want to be compliant, but we need to make sure we leave some room for ourselves. We don't want to lose control entirely, so.
Andy.
Yeah, so I'm, I have a few questions. What's a unit? I mean, a unit is a place where people live. And so is there a minimum square footage requirement for that unit?
The language in the guidelines is that a 3A compliant unit be suitable for families. And I can tell you that the typical apartment size that's implied in the model, it's not explicitly reported, but you can back it out. The typical apartment size is between 1,000 and 1,100 square feet, which would either be a good sized two bedroom or a smallish three bedroom. I think that's the assumption.
Okay, so let's do the math. You have 2,000 units, each 1,000 square feet. That's 2 million square feet of living space. That's a huge building, absolutely huge. If you were to put it all in one apartment building, that would be a 20 story structure at 100,000 square feet per floor, which is an unbelievably large.
One and a half pruz.
Yeah. So I mean, you know, where would we have land to accomplish that here in Belmont? And how do we, how do you even take this forward to a developer? You know, somebody has to
Wait, wait, wait. Let me repeat something that I think we say in every meeting. The 3A is simply zoning. It doesn't say anything about building anything. It's, it's just creating zoning. And the zoning is for specific parcels. Most of those parcels are smallish, so that any building that would go on them, I think the largest in the model has something like 100 100 or 150 units. That would be the largest. But so you, you would never have one gigantic end all be all structure. That, that's not the way it would work.
Then you would need like 20 parcels.
Well, but you're not required to build anything, or you're just required to zone. And then it would be up to some future developer either to find an empty lot and build on it. And we do have some empty lots in Belmont. Or they would have to tear something down and replace it with something else.
Yeah, well, you, you said 50% of the development has to be in one contiguous piece of land, right?
Well, no, the zoning, the zoning has to be for parcels contained in such an area, but it's still individual parcels. So in that, so let me give you, for instance, if you uh if you were in the Waverly area, you have lots of um let me be very specific. Uh the maps that we've drawn thus far include Thayer Road, which is the road that runs along the railroad tracks uh as you leave um Waverly Square by the gas station down there. Right now, those are a mix of, they're mostly four-unit uh buildings, they're quads. And they're on lots that are maybe six thousand square feet. And there's maybe seven or eight of them strung along the tracks there. In the zoning, uh all it says is that uh that area is rezoned as an option. Remember, it's going to be an overlay. So that in the future, somebody could either build a new structure under the current zoning, or they could build a new structure under the three A, which would probably be somewhat higher density, but they'd have to tear down the structure on that one parcel and build something new. And it it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with what happens on the next parcel.
And that this is all for low income or low?
No, it is. It's mark, it's like it would be like any other multifamily structure in Belmont where it's it's a market rate building, but we have an inclusionary zoning bylaw that says a percentage that could go as high as fifteen percent of the units in that structure have to satisfy an affordability criteria.
Okay, okay. Well, it's a funny thing, because we're already a town that's basically homes and not much business. And you're, and what's being suggested is that we convert even more of the potential business land to more.
That is a tension, which is why I, for one, am trying to um not further displace existing businesses to be solely housing, but to try to preserve commercial locations as much as we can.
Good. Because our our taxes are already high. Well, all right, I have a better understanding. Now, you said you have maps. So I guess I should review that.
Well, let me just caution everybody, this is very much a work in progress, so there are maps from the M A P C presentation from just a week ago. But I think they've already been superseded because each of the maps, the maps that show Waverly all include the Star Market and the Car Wash, and I I think those are now off the table, so. Uh M A P C, I'm hoping will give us a new presentation at the end of this week, and we'll see what changes they make to the maps.
We do have other, thank you. We do have other business that we need to attend to, so I still want to uh wrap up this update, so. Um I what I'd like to do, Taylor, I didn't hear from you, or uh if you want to restate uh your position with respect to number of units. And then Thayer?
Uh yeah, I support compliance plus a roughly ten percent buffer, so that gets you to about eighteen hundred units.
Okay, and Thayer?
Um I'm I'm not able to pick a number. I do think we, I mean, if I had to guess, I'd say we might come up with an option in the low two thousands. Um but I think we're we're trying to balance a lot of issues as well as do good urban design and retain our commercial tax base, so in terms of zoning, it may provide more, but the likelihood of those properties being built out, I think, is one to none.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
Based on what Rachel shared about the ability for the usage to not necessarily match the zoning with regard to the senior housing, so as long as we're not restricting it based on the age component, can we look at these scenarios that are in play right now, the three scenarios, to include both of those parcels, the one at the corner of Trepello and Winter Street and also Sherman Gardens?
Well, they've been
When M A P C is going through that?
I think what what we're doing now is double checking to make sure that they really can can be included as as we thought they could be.
Great. I think, I mean, just from my perspective, looking at those and the density and the opportunities that could be in those spaces, I think those would be something that I would personally really like to see included in the modeling, so we get a full picture of what's possible with those. And then also across the street while we're on it, you know, I mean, the um, there's already the mixed use building that's next to the spray park. It used to be Andrew's diner back in the day. Um because it seemed like a lot of the properties on that side of the street were also not included as well.
So
Well, we can discuss that further at another time, because that brings up contiguity issues I'd rather not get into right now.
Okay, thank you.
Um I have one question, and then I want to do one thing and try it out, but um is there going to be some form of a financial impact analysis with respect to sixteen hundred thirty-two units or eighteen hundred units? And what does it mean for the town on a scaled-up manner when three hundred units are built, three hundred families move in, six hundred, one thousand, fifteen hundred? I mean, at what point do we understand what the impact is to this town? Both either in revenue and cost infrastructure, schools, fire department, I mean, what? Is that being looked into? Or what?
The the this committee is not planning to do that, but uh I know that Liz Allison has a uh framework for that that she developed back when Cushing Square and the Royal Belmont were first proposed. So I would suggest that the planning board or Chris approach Liz and she she see if she has anything that could be adapted for this purpose, but the committee is not going to do it.
Thank you. Chris?
I I sorry. Yeah, so um at this point, we have two possible options um other than what you just stated. Uh one is the uh the market and fiscal impact analysis project that has been proposed that, you know, has the possibility of being funded uh later this month, or at least uh the discussion started. Could very easily include a scenario with all of the M B T A housing included in it as uh, you know, one of the scenarios. Um this would be completed well before fall town meeting and uh would be able to show exactly what the impact is uh of the scenario that was proposed. Um short of that, um the town of of Milton did the same thing, but just for M B T A communities uh using the uh the firm of R K G. Um one of the firms that uh Belmont is also considering for the larger market and fiscal impact analysis, so um I would say there's a very good chance that if we have that um analysis started soon, that we could have that answer in a reasonable amount of time.
I think it's of definite interest uh to the board to have that information, but if not the board, because we're talking about compliance, uh definitely for the town. Uh Rachel, before I take you, I'd like to open it up quickly to public comment. That is public comment specifically pertaining to what the plan, what your expectations or suggestions are of the planning board as we go through this process. So not to the current status of the M B T A uh committee's progress, not to scenarios, but specifically in regards of what you would like the planning board to consider. I'd like to limit your comments, please, to about a minute, because I want to, because of other business we have. Wrap up this update at eight thirty. So we have one hand, uh Ms. Baptista, if we can um promote Addie or or Ad, please?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time. Appreciate the wonderful observation. Um I just want to make sure um that I can provide the link to the website. Make sure that um that anything the planning board does consider, they consider the guidelines and the sort of the the federal law that was passed by 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 everybody. Um and and basically on the on their, on the MassGov site, it says that why is multifamily zoning near transit and in neighborhood communities? And and in neighboring communities important? And it says point blank Massachusetts in the housing crisis. Massachusetts has among the highest and fastest growing home prices in the state and nation. And I think you we have to agree with that, considering all of our property values have grown up quite a bit as long as we all live there, right? Um rising costs of driving, increased financial pressures in low and middle income families, forcing them to sacrifice other parties in order to pay housing bills. And so what they're saying here in 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 the comments, which is that you need is that like for Massachusetts to take competitive, we need to do this. And so I do appreciate the the concern about um this being the biggest zoning uh effort. The state understands that, and that's why they have to let, we need to do this, because they're competitive with other states to keep talent. Um and and the job that I had before, I was charged to hire lots of people, and I had a part-time hiring in Boston because it was just so expensive here, so I looked at other states to hire people. That 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 felt that felt bad to me. I wanted to hire locally. I had to hire in other states, as you told about. So uh I don't want to have a minute, but um I could post a link um to this MassGov info details, multifamily zoning requirements for M B T A communities easily searched upon Google, and I think that
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't think anyone is uh saying that we're not going to do this. Uh what we're looking for is minimum compliance, uh but thank you for your comments. Is there anyone, is there, there are no other hands from the public at this point in time? Okay. Uh Rachel?
Thanks, just a couple of quick points. Um Andrew, in response to your concerns about uh economic development, it's very much a focus of our committee's work, not just that we don't displace businesses, but that we're actually supporting businesses and business growth and adding more customers and uh and and really creating more of a thriving walkable neighborhoods. Um you know, that that really bring in more of a commercial tax base. Uh but also just to let you all know, um the Housing Trust actually before, uh as part of the process of proposing the development at McLean or supporting that proposal and working with the town, we did an analysis as well that showed, and this was with the with the help of consultants who do this work, uh the revenue that was being generated for the town. Um and that included building permits, it included property taxes, so and so I think it's important to note, not only do you maybe have products from the past around Cushing Square, there's actually even more recent ones that we did and included the cost of town services, and it showed a net win for for the town. Um and the Milton numbers, I I recommend people look at that. It's a really good study, and hopefully we're able to do it here. It also shows that with more homes, you are bringing in more revenue to cover all the services. So there's some really good stuff out there that we can look to to help us on economic and in an economic analysis, but our whole goal is to actually foster more economic development as well as more affordability. But thank you for bringing all those points up.
Yeah, look, I know that we have to comply with the requirements, whether it's eighteen hundred units or it's decided at two thousand units. I think it would be prudent to understand what the impact is to the town infrastructure, not just the services. So we only have so much so much room in these schools that we have to support, right, the number of children. So what happens when we have four hundred families moving in or eight hundred families on a sliding scale? At what point do we need to build a new school? To support the elementary or middle or supplementary high school, right? So um because we talk about thirty million for library or or forty million, excuse me, and three hundred million dollars for a high school, and we need to know elementary school, the dollars by revenue that we're going to bring in on two thousand units aren't going to pay for an eighty million dollar elementary school on day one or day five, right? The revenue is over a period of time. Um so I just think the town is probably more of a select board thing and all the financial people to really understand where that threshold is uh so that we can prepare for it, as opposed to maybe having it be a surprise. Um okay, so look, we look forward to your next update uh in three weeks, or right, the twenty-seventh. You guys have made a lot of progress in the last month, so thank you very much. We look forward to the uh same amount or more uh progress uh on the twenty-seventh. I think that's fair to fair to say.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and you're very welcome.
Okay. Um Chris, what's next on the agenda is and we don't really need much time, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to discuss the upcoming zoning changes. Um and I'd like to start with the hotels, please, since that's the one item we did not review last time, correct?
Yes, that is correct. Um first, I would recommend um either a reading of the public hearing notice or a waiver of reading of the public hearing notice, since this is the opening of our public hearing.
Oh, okay. Um I don't have it in front of me. Do you want to read it?
Sure. Um Belmont Planning Board Public Hearing Notice pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Belmont Planning Board will hold a public hearing to discuss three sets of proposed tax amendments to the Belmont zoning bylaws on Tuesday, February sixth, twenty twenty-four, starting at seven oh five P M, or as soon thereafter as may be heard on the Zoom platform. The subject matter of the proposed tax amendments are as follows. One, by amending Section one point four definitions in abbreviation, Section three-three schedule of use regulations, and Section six special regulations establishing a new category of use boutique hotel, which are typically smaller, more intimate lodging facilities that focus on design style, setting out related requirements and streamlining the permitting process for such uses. Two, amending Section five-one off-street parking and loading to reduce the parking requirements for restaurants. Amending Section one point four definitions, Section one point five non-conforming uses and structures, Section four intensity regulations, and Section six D single and two-family dwellings in the general resident zoning districts to correct errors and contradictions uh contradictory provisions. The complete text of the proposed amendments is available for inspection at on at the town clerk's office in the office of planning building during regular business hours and on the planning board's website uh on the Town of Belmont webpage, um H T T P blah 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 blah. Uh Jeff Bernbaum, Chair Belmont Playing Board. So do you want to vote to open the public hearing?
Okay, so we are opening up the public hearing. Um I'd like to start with the hotels portion since the um we have not discussed that yet. Um and then we can uh ask for a public comment on that, but does the other board members agree? Should we go through the hotel first, or do you want to go through in the order that we went through last time and we review? Any preference?
I think starting with hotels makes sense.
All right, let's do that. Can we throw it up on this screen? Great, thank you.
Yes, can you see my screen? Okay, great. So uh go ahead.
I was just, I was gonna say what the purpose was of what we're doing here, but you can do it.
Oh, sure. So um uh I believe it emanated from the Economic Development Committee and also uh Vision twenty-one to uh one of the ideas to enhance economic development and bring in tax revenue was to consider um a limited boutique hotel use. And so um we did some research and came up with some language. Um just to let you know the process, um I I came up with the initial language. Uh Jeff modified it uh and made some changes to that. And then we sent it on to town council, of which everything you're going to hear tonight has already been vetted by town council. And the version you're going to see tonight uh and hear about was uh the one that went through the town council process. So um do you have any questions before I get started? Okay.
Actually, sorry, I have one question. Um so it it for these um public forums, is the guidance that we're just here to listen to public feedback, or is this our opportunity, the planning board's opportunity to discuss these as well?
It would be both. This this is officially and formally a public hearing, which under the uh, you know, state law, uh forty A is required uh that the public, uh that the planning board hold a public hearing. And upon the closing of that public hearing, after however many sessions that you have, That um it is recommended that the planning board write a report which would be submitted to town meeting. So. In. Section one. This section that you see highlighted in it's half gray, half yellow is the um. Definition. And uh, it was the recommendation of the um. The town council that you did not need the term boutique, but. Obviously, it is up to you as to whether you want to reinsert that. Um, and so it reads as follows hotel, a facility which is kept used or advertised as. Or held out to the public to be a place where sleeping accommodations are supplied. Or pay to guests for transient occupancy and which contain no fewer than five and no more than forty eight guest rooms or suites. The accommodations may be in the same building or group of buildings provided the entire hotel is located on one lot or on contiguous lots.
So to me. Boutique provides for a greater level of design. Than just a cookie cutter. Fairfield gardening type of hotel. Um, and I I think it's an important word to have. Assess the expectations for anyone who may be reading this because. Um, that's my first comment. My second comment is, and I don't remember if I put it here. Or under the general regulations and council probably. Mixed it, but um. In some form or another. I think it would be important to, I. Define or clarify what we mean by hotel or boutique hotel in terms of. Level of 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 design, guest experience. Which which is a direct correlation to what's called A D R, which is average daily rate. I do not want to see a hotel in Belmont or Belmont to experience what other towns have had. With temporary housing vouchers order like. For seventy nine dollars a night or ninety nine dollars a night or whatever it is. But uh, the idea that I have behind allowing a boutique hotel or hotel in Belmont. Would be of of a of a nature similar to that of. Uh Lexington on the Green, right, where and and your hotel rates are. Two fifty, three hundred, four hundred dollars a night starting minimal. Um, that defines the level of type of hotel and what it means for. You know, what what? My idea of vision of what what this would be. So that that's my comment about that, and I don't know if that goes here or elsewhere.
Well, doesn't. So Chris, the way I understand the zoning bylaws are written. This section, section one, it just gives a definition so that when that word is used to the rest of zoning by law, there's like a legal agreement on what that word means.
Yes.
A subsequent section and then the the. The subsequent section specifies the regulations around. Whatever, you know, whatever, basically whatever we want, right? And and often it is focused on a. Business type or business areas, you know, overlay district. And then the third relevant section is the use table where it would say what's allowed, where and under what conditions. So I think that what you're talking about, Jeff, would probably be in that second bucket. Uh, like what what are our hotel regulations?
I mean, can it be both? Like, can we use? Can we use the word boutique here? And also uh, it doesn't put a time limit on here. I think the lot limit is thirty days by law. Uh, however, all you need to do is check out and check back in. Uh, on on the books and you can stay there as long as you want. So. When we talk about transient occupancy, we talk about transient occupancy. Uh, exceeding no more than thirty days?
That that was a uh, an element that we put in. Section six. And um. If I'm not mistaken, I believe that might have been. Uh, removed as well, but uh.
I saw that.
I haven't looked at this in a week or so, but I'll I'll check on it for you. But it probably would be better suited in that section six rather than. The definition, which should be probably as simple as possible.
I I would think for this to pass town meeting, if if, you know, when people think hotel, depending on what their experience is with hotels. It's going to be like a big box. Uh, with uh minimal design on the outside and on entry and lobby. And that's not in keeping with what I think. Context is of what we want for Belmont. I would like to add the word boutique. I don't know what, I don't know if this is a vote or a discussion or what others think. It's my opinion.
I mean, is that. Or shares in other zoning bylaws?
Yes, I I've seen boutique hotel defined in others zoning. Um, not necessarily Massachusetts zoning, but um I've seen it in California. I've seen it in New York. Um, so it it is not a precedent setting. Um, definition. So I don't I don't think there would be a problem adding it back. It just depends upon if if you guys have consensus that you want that to be. That term to be added back and if you want anything else to. You know, sort of. Facilitate that definition by describing it in more detail. You know, we can certainly try to bring back what we had before.
Also, I thought I had in this definition in my write up that was sleeping accommodations. Uh, I know maybe I talked about rooms. There was rooms or suites each with its own bathroom. Was was, I thought was important so that we don't find ourselves in a rooming house situation. So I would propose adding or boutique back in. And adding no more than forty eight guest rooms or suites each with its own bathroom. So we don't have a communal bathroom type of situation. I don't know if anyone has any opinions on that. That's my recommendation for this.
I mean, I I don't have a strong, you know, I don't have. Like super strong opinions. The only alternative would be again in the hotel regulations section, the bylaw. Is where the that information would go, including um probably design regulations if we want to put them in there.
I have found that definitions contractually carry a great amount of weight. And can cause for some loopholes. So I I would advise that. We provide a definition. That. Is geared towards what our intention and expectations are in terms of. Hotel or boutique hotel, and then we can elaborate. Or further define in the other bylaw type of sections. I'm just trying to close any type of loophole. Um, or or further define of what the expectation is for any developer or brand. That come in and say, we we welcome them to build a boutique hotel. And eat, but the but we it needs to be like special. Uh, not just the box. Um, you know, uh, and because the boxes are ugly. And they call for lower, you know, they're off of highways, which are fine. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think that's what we're looking for here. Um, so that's why I write recommend boutique hotel because it applies. Higher design. More um. Uh, uh, not comfy, but um. More embracing, more intimate. Uh, as opposed to uh box brand. Drive revenue, get higher occupancy each and every night. And then each guest room should have its own bathroom. No or sweet.
Well, Jeff, I do a lot of travel all over the country. And I've never had a room that didn't have a bathroom, so I think the the risk.
You have to stay at the um, not the Renaissance Hotel. What's the hotel that was just built in 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 Boston made for the um? It was developed by Mount Vernon Company. Hold on. Mount Vernon Company Hotel, Boston. So there's a hotel in Boston. I forget its name. It's a nice hotel, but it's guest rooms. It's not a hostel. But there's guest rooms and they have shared bathrooms. For for the millennials. I'll just, I'll just, I'll figure it out in one second. Um, Carol?
To close the gap on that, I have stayed in those when I was traveling, doing community service in college and. Um, so they do exist and there's quite a few of them. Uh, my question is in a slightly different direction and I have two parts of it. First is. Um, the decision to put in forty eight rooms. Um, that just feels large to me and I could just be picturing it. Um, bigger than it would actually be. So just wanted to throw that question out there. And also with the change that was made regarding the commercial zoning, um, there was the amendment made about the number of. Um. It was it was regarding the the restaurant zoning and things like that, but I think that we had decided that what it was something about fifty unit. If you had more than fifty of a particular location. Um, Taylor, I see you nodding, so you know what I'm talking about or what I'm trying to articulate. Um, would there be any limitations with this about what types of chains would be allowed? Or would there be no restrictions? Has that something that has been brought up at all?
Oh, yeah. You want to talk about form based businesses? Because Chris and I can talk all night about that.
I knew someone would have the wording.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, formula based businesses. So like. Um. Okay, so so the the previous discussion on hotels, uh, you're right, it's sort of. We sort of dialed into defining them by like size and roughly by type. So we talked about small boutique B and Bs and um, you know, larger. You know, or like comfort ends, et cetera. Um, but a formula based establishments. Uh, is like the technical term for a chain and um, the way they are defined is they have to, they basically. Uh, Chris, you can fill in the blanks from here, but they have to, they actually have to literally like follow some kind of formula like. For restaurants, it's a similar menu, similar logo, similar. Name and um. And like basically similar concept. Uh, and then we define, we chose what the threshold was for the number of locations um that we consider a formula based. Establishment. I think, you know, maybe maybe that is getting at what. What Jeff's talking about, maybe maybe not quite because there are, you know, one, there's like that. Here there are one off motels, right, that that probably are not. That's what you're getting at, Jeff, that you really don't want to see. And um, you know, that's probably not a fit for Belmont. Um. But yeah, I. Yeah, I that I think that is that what you're getting at, Carol, is like the whole formula based establishment thing?
Yes, and I was really just asking, is that a factor that is going to be worked into this? Are we looking at that as as a component to it?
My only thing with that is I feel like a lot of. Nice hotels are part of chains just because of the nature of that business model, right? You make money by having multiple locations and people join your like. You know, people join your like points program, et cetera. So I I think whereas restaurants, there was like a really clear. Um, a really clear case to be made for how that could be undesirable in Belmont. I think in uh. For hotels, it might even be the opposite. That like a chain hotel would be good because they that usually chain hotels are nice. Um, but yeah, so I I think the dimension that we really want to go for is more what Jeff's talking about, which is. Design and requirements of an acceptable hotel, whether they're a chain or not a chain.
It's okay if they're, so you have a Marriott. And you have the Marriott A C brand. You then have the Marriott A C Autograph brand. The difference between the two. If you're a hotel snob like myself, is fairly great. And it's all in the finishes. It's in the actual uh guest experience. Um, and and service in the hotel and and in the design. So. It um, it it makes it, so you can have a brand like Marriott or Wyndham or Hilton. And then within the brands are 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 other operating type of brands and they have different levels of. Of of um. Standards. And all I'm trying to do is is establish what our standard is, and it is not. In my opinion, a ninety nine dollar per night room. I just looked at Hastings. It's all Hastings on the park or Hastings Inn. And their A D R and it's in the middle of winter. It's hovering around two fifty so a night. Um, and that's that's what we want, uh, that type of. Hotel development. Um, that's why I think it's important to say boutique. And I think it's important, and it's a revolution hotel, Andy, by the way. Um, that is hotel rooms, uh, they're micro hotel rooms and they have shared bathrooms. Um. No disrespect to the hotel, it's a beautiful design. I wouldn't stay there either because it's a shared bathroom and the rooms may be too small, but um.
Yeah, I mean, I think you think hotels, they they tend to be built where there's reason for people to be there. It's not, not in home communities like ours. It's in places where there's a sporting arena or there's a lot of restaurants. Um. Or there's a, you know, some university or so a reason for people, they have to come there and stay at a hotel. And I just, you know, I. We're not that near Boston, you know, that I see that we're a target for hotel chains. But I agree with you that by all means, put the word boutique in there. And basically give us some say over the architectural design of the of the hotel when they bring it to the planning board.
Renee, Sarah, any preference?
I'm fine with bringing boutique in.
Yeah, me too. Strong preference.
So Chris, let's put in boutique. Please.
Okay. Okay, and I just want to uh, I just want to let Michelle, who is um taking our minutes. Um, just be a particular um focus on when we suggest modifications to the text here so that we. Capture it in the minutes and um I can make sure that the that these changes are are made. Um, because I don't have the capacity right now to take notes. Uh, she's going to be my note taker. Um. Could I just add a couple of thoughts uh based on your your? I know we need to move on here, but one thing, I've got five points. One is that the uh, the market and fiscal analysis that I was talking about earlier. Was going to look at hospitality industry. So um, there will be an opportunity to look at what the market would be. For uh hospitality, including hotels and restaurants um in the town. That's one point. Another point is that the the number threshold is um, you know, number one, it could be informed by that market analysis, but. Another point related to it is that it's got to be of a scale that the industry wants to build at a minimum. Um, and you know, you get get below that and you're not going to have any interest whatsoever. The other thing related to scale is um at a low scale. You're probably not going to have any structured parking, which could be integrated into the uh into the building. And you would be required to have uh surface parking, which could be a problem related to uh finding a site. Um, the other thing is that the original version that was uh that I wrote that came from my conversations with the E D C. Uh, had a threshold of thirty five by right. And then thirty five, thirty six to one hundred by special permit. In this particular case, we're at forty eight, all by special permit. Um. We haven't talked about, we did talk about design, but. You know, one of the things that we may want to consider to pair with this is a set of design guidelines. And uh, they're not that difficult to uh to. Is a set of design guidelines and they're not that difficult to uh to write. But they they do have to be developed separately. It might be a good idea to uh at least rule out the idea of formula-based business restrictions. You know, or put a very high number out there so that some of the chains that have like a boutique type. Could be included under that threshold. And then finally, um and and the fifth one you've already worked on, which is the definition, so thank you for that. Um are you ready for me to uh to move on to the next section?
I'm sorry, do we need to put on here uh each having its own bathroom or do we put that somewhere else?
Well, uh let me get through um all of the sections and I will show you what section six looks like. And if you think that it's more appropriate in the definition or in section six, um we can maybe determine that at that time. Right, so I'm going to stop sharing this. And I am going to start sharing the next version, which would be section three. And then let's see.
By the way, just to just to comment on Carol's question and and I think there's a question for Doug also in the chat. The forty-eight number uh was it a number that I came up with when um I I reviewed it? You heard Chris say what the original number was. I did, it it can be, you know, I felt that that was on the high end. But you can have a boutique hotel. It all depends on the ADR and the guest experience and the amenities. Uh as well as twenty units. It all depends on their ROI. Right, the return on investment, so. There's a lot of other considering factors and and Andy's point. I agree with you. Belmont is not a town where someone's going to drive off of ninety-five and one-twenty-eight and stay at a hotel for one or two or three nights. It's not a destination type of resort hotel per se, but there there there, I I think that. There is a component of the hospitality where we can have a boutique hotel and we are still very close to Boston. Where we are not four hundred and fifty dollars a night, but two hundred and fifty dollars a night and we have two train stops. And it's it's very relevant to the fact that um you know, especially with the direct train. Especially that the access to uh to the to the north. Right, Porter Square, I think only has one or two blocks like the hotels and that's it.
Okay, so in section, yeah, so section three, uh schedule of use regulations, it's just simply a. A line adding hotel as a use under business. Uh showing that it would be not permitted in any of the residential districts, nor in LB one. And would be a special permit use in LB two, LB three and general business. You know, certainly, my my original construction of this was to develop it by right. Uh at a certain scale and have enough requirements listed. So that, you know, we would make sure that in the site plan review. We would make sure that all of those requirements were met, so. But again, here it shows as a special permit use in uh limited to those three districts. And also there is uh the possibility of considering some of the uh the McLean and some other areas as well. So um you know, we uh. There may be some others overlay districts that that might be uh inappropriate use, but for now. We're just considering these three business districts.
Taylor?
Yeah, so the short of it is, I I think we should relax this a little bit, like I think maybe relax everything. One level so that um you know, they are allowed um with a special permit in LB one. Allow with a by right in LB two and general business district, maybe keep the special permit requirement in LB three, because that's the one that's closest to. The most homes, but um I know the EDC. But like discussed this and voted um unanimously in favor of, let me see, they said, they said um. They said LB one and LB two, they felt were the most suitable suitable for by right hotels. Hotels of larger size could be permissible with a special permit and that hotels could be permissible by a special permit in LB three in the general business district. So the short of it is, I think this is, I think this level of requirement is. Like, I think it's too onerous and I think we could, I think there, we could make them allowable by right. In my opinion, the general business district in LB two for sure and then um special permit in LB one and LB three.
Any any reason why, Chris, we took out LB one?
Say that again, Jeff.
Any any reason why we did a no for LB one?
I I would have to check with um council on that. Um that was something that. They, this this uh. All of this is from council.
I agree with Taylor. We should lax it a little. And LB one should be included.
So one included as a special permit or by right?
I, you know, if I had my druthers, we would follow the recommendation of the EDC because they're the ones that are looking into commercial viability. More than other, any other committee in town. But, you know, if that's a bridge too far, at the very least by special permit.
Does special permit include design site plan review?
Uh it can, if you write it that way.
May I suggest the uh by rights be SPS, which is special permit by size? And if it's more than five thousand, seven thousand or so many square feet, then they have to come back for a special permit, otherwise. To certain square footage, they would have it by right. But if let's say someone is able to do like fifteen thousand square feet hotel, then uh it could be something that I think. The board has to look into it to see how it affects everything else in the neighborhood. And that would be SPS, special permit size. Otherwise, anything more than whatever is written would be by right. Thank you.
You could probably um. You could probably convert fifteen thousand square feet to thirty-five rooms plus or minus. I would assign about two hundred and fifty square feet. For a room and common area hallway. And then you'd want to add area for any other type of accessory use, whether it be. Office areas, uh lobby, uh recreation facilities and the like, so. That may be a benchmark you're comfortable with or maybe something else.
I mean, I like the idea, except from a developer perspective, if I have fifteen thousand square feet by right. Or fifteen thousand square feet by special permit. And I can build by right underneath that, I'll just come in at fourteen thousand nine ninety. That's what I would do, right, so. I I tell you what, we're not, we're not, we're not closing this discussion, right? We can still think about this, we're not closing it, so. I think if you ask council why LB one was excluded and and give maybe. What can we come back with that maybe laxes this a little bit, but still gives us some control? There?
I, I would suggest that everyone look at the zoning map to see where the LB one is. I think that, I don't know if that has anything to do with council's. Recommendation, but it's Cushing Square, Belmont Center and a small part of um Waverly. The center of all those three areas, so I think if if you think a hotel with a big. Requisite parking is appropriate in those locations, then LB one is fine, but I. You know. The zoning goes with the map and so you, we need to look at the map.
Thank you.
We could also consider other locational criteria, which could, you know, be a little bit more of a delimiting factor. If you wanted to make sure that uh it wasn't adjacent to. You know, residential districts or single-family homes or things like that. So uh do you want to just move on to this and? Alright, so let me then. Here, section five. Close this out. And section five is. Off-street parking and loading. So basically, um we get rid of. Motels, room and board. It's hotels and other commercial accommodations. I don't know why that wasn't struck. One parking space for each guest unit plus one parking space for each eight units or fractions thereof, so that's that's what we have currently.
So I would make a boutique hotel and I would strike other commercial accommodations because we're only talking about the hotel. And I don't have any issue with the parking.
So the only thing that I have as a question in that regard is um. As long as uh the the boutique hotel definition is inclusive. Of all of its accessory and ancillary uses, then I think that would work. Okay, makes sense? I think that's all for this section, yes. Okay, so let me stop sharing.
If we had, it seems like if we had a hotel with forty-eight guest rooms, we would have to have forty-eight spaces.
Yes.
What if it's on the train? What if it's on a, what if it's in Belmont Center or Waverly? We have the right. Permit to waive the parking requirements?
I think there is that provision in the parking section that gives you that uh flexibility.
Okay, Carol?
Wouldn't we also need some parking for whoever is working at the hotel or maintenance and things of that nature?
Ideally, the ADRs get really high, so their employees will make a lot of money so they can live in Belmont and then walk to work. Because we're building sixteen hundred units.
No, but there was an extra spot for every.
Every eight.
The, I'm trying to find the right section.
I mean, I don't know where we would build a forty-eight room hotel and put forty-eight parking spaces unless they go down.
I think it's this one. I don't think you can see that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my whole desktop, so I don't have to do this anymore. Here, desktop. So um. This is the section on special regulations. And so it's the last. Provision, we added a six point one three. Hotel regulations. So it provides a purpose. Purpose this section is provide specific requirements that shall be met for hotel uses. General requirements, the following general requirement shall apply to hotel uses, only. Guest rooms or suites shall be used for sleeping. Each guest room or suite shall have its own bathroom. Uh any parties, gatherings or other planned events involving persons who are not paying guests to the hotel or customers of any accessory business they're on. Shall use accessory function spaces.
What does it mean that only guest rooms or suites shall be used for sleeping? As opposed to what, running a business or something? Cooking dinner? Wait, what are they, what are you trying to say here?
Well, I think that is uh just intended to. I guess focus it on what a hotel is used for and maybe it's just sort of a redundancy that may or may not be of any value. Moving on to uh amenity accessory uses. The following accessory uses serving the needs of guests or visitors shall be considered accessory uses. Which are customarily incidental to hotels, swimming pools, spas, salons, beauty or barber shops. Fitness centers or gymnasiums, restaurants, restaurants, fast food, restaurants, takeout. Now, I I will tell you why that was put in there, because that's what our bylaw actually says right now. And I think that town council probably got ahead of themselves. It's going to actually say uh eating establishments, the way that we made changes at uh town meeting in the fall. But until that actually goes through the um attorney general. It's still restaurants. Um I would recommend taking out fast food and takeout, uh unless you want to consider. Coffee shops under that definition. Other retail sales and services, guest business centers and function spaces. And then in any hotel, such uses in the aggregate shall not exceed thirty percent of the gross floor area. Of the hotel and I'll stop there.
With the additional uses, should there be any provisions built in about parking? You're obviously not looking to limit what the uses could be, just thinking about the placement of these. If there is, for example, a hotel that goes into Belmont Center. And that hotel has the capacity of hosting of a larger social event. And the parking in the adjacent area is taken up by the larger number of guests that could attend an event. As opposed to be staying at the facility or at the hotel, could that be a negative impact on neighboring businesses? I just don't know how big something could be made to accommodate, you know, and if we just need to have something written in there. Where this will be by special permit. Back to kind of where we could have very large chains with very deep pockets to kind of argue what they want. I just want to make sure that we're not going to potentially expose ourselves to something that could hinder other local businesses.
I think the biggest chance for having uh external patronage. Is when you have, for example, maybe a restaurant fronting the street. Or having a, an exit or entrance that would be separate from the hotel itself. I think most of these uses are going to be, like say, for example, um the spas or the fitness center. Going to be very internal to the uh facility and will probably not and would not even welcome. Outside visitation, although I do know of some hotels that have gyms that are large enough that actually have membership. But you know, for for restaurants, possibly retail sales if they have a large enough gift shop. Uh I think those are the only two uses I think that really could fall into the category, Carol, that you're concerned about.
I'm thinking about function space, so if one of these hotels has a lovely ballroom or something like that that can accommodate a wedding. You can usually fit more guests in a scenario like that, depending on the size of the room. Are there occupancy requirements that are worked into other parts of the zoning bylaws and things like that? I'm just trying to think of other things that could happen at the hotel that could spill out into the other areas. And I'm not saying that it's all negative, you know, if there is a a facility like this in town, it could bring other people in. Even if they're not necessarily staying at the hotel, that could patronize other businesses in town in a very positive way. I'm just questioning if we need to look at that impact in what the usage could be in case it could err on the negative side.
Let me just say one thing. If you, if you limit the, the hotel size, let's say, for example, to forty-five guest rooms, which would probably be somewhere in the, in the vicinity of about twelve to fourteen thousand square feet. You couldn't have any more than forty-two hundred square feet combined of all of these uses. So whatever function space you'd have in there would be fairly limiting. You're just, you're, you're, just on the very nature of this, we're, we're limiting size to, uh, the, the overall facility itself, the, the overall hotel building and whatever is involved in it. And then whatever is outside of the, you know, the hotel use itself is, can only be thirty percent of that.
Okay.
Any additional comments on six thirteen, one, two, or three?
Uh, I would strike gymnasiums. And I would do, I would do the food service establishments now, pursuant to our recent bylaw, uh, adoption. I would get rid of takeout and fast food and restaurants.
Does everybody agree with that? Okay. Oh, Michelle, I hope you got that? Um, okay, exceptions to schedule of dimensional requirements. Except as otherwise provided in this section, a hotel should comply with the schedule of dimensional regulations contained in section four-two of this bylaw, notwithstanding that the schedule, a hotel may have a floor area ratio up to one-point-two-five and a lot coverage up to fifty percent. And we would have to probably show that graphically because that question is going to be asked.
So just so I understand, we have an eight-thousand-square-foot lot, which is small. Are you saying that the building can only cover, building and parking or whatever it is can only cover fifty percent of that? Four thousand square feet?
That's what this is written as, yeah.
Sorry, that took me just to build itself, but it could be only two and a half stories high if the, uh, F A R is one-point-twenty-five.
Seems kind of small, no? Minuting?
It could be, yeah. I mean, one-point-two-five is basically fifty, uh, fifty thousand square feet on a forty-thousand-square-foot lot, if it was an acre. Or if it was an eight, uh, you know, eight thousand square foot would be a fifth of that. So, um, yeah, I mean, you, you can do the math, but it's, it's fairly small. And then lot coverage, you know, would also include parking.
No.
So if it had to have.
No, that would be. Lot coverage is structures only, which is the building without the parking.
Okay.
There's open space, which is zero.
What's, uh, lot coverage now? What's a lot coverage by law now for office buildings?
It's all the same, lot coverage, the percent of structures that cover the lot. And for commercial, for, uh, business districts, the open space is typically zero. It doesn't exist versus F A R exists, which means it gives how many stories they can build, which would be one-twenty-five for typical by a special permit, one-point-five for, for L B one district. Meaning that it could be, uh, let's say like if the building is, I'm sorry, if the building is four thousand square feet, then the F A R would be, uh, if the lot is eight thousand square feet, the total building square footage could be eight plus two, ten thousand square feet. But the lot coverage would be only four thousand square feet. That means it's two and a half stories, uh, or two and a quarter stories high. If they go to the limits with the lot coverage.
What's our lot coverage now for an office building? Is there?
Thirty-five.
What?
No, thirty-five.
Thirty-five. It, it's not by the use, it's by the zone. So it's L B two and L B three, it's thirty-five percent.
It was our highest.
That's the highest. Sorry, that, I mean, this is an example of why our zoning needs to be redone. I mean, the older buildings, obviously, before zoning, you know, have a more normal lot coverage. But this, when Belmont downzoned everything, this is what you get.
I, I do think that it might be a good idea if, um, maybe Ara and I, if he would be willing to work with me, we could pick out some lots in each of the districts and just play with the numbers. See how they work, see what would come out, come out from it.
I think in addition to these changes, there has to be the number of stories and the building height changes. If you're looking at forty-eight rooms, uh, or fifty rooms, whatever, then I don't want to, I don't think you can, you should sort of just have a two-story or, uh, two-and-a-half-story structure.
This goes to form-based code. I mean, if there are a bunch of buildings that are six, seven stories high, you can, you should be able to build another building that is six, seven stories high. But you don't put a six, seven-story building, you know, with, with a bunch of buildings that are one story. I just, it's all about the context, right? So.
Yep.
I, I think fifty percent lot coverage could be too much in some locations and too little in others. So I don't know how you can. It goes to the full zoning, uh, rewrite, I guess.
Well, like I said, Ara and I will, will play around with, uh, the dimensional characteristics and see if there's a happy medium that we can find.
Okay.
So the next section is, uh, six thirteen-five, special permit criteria. And, uh, this was added by town council. Um, so I probably won't be able to fully rationalize it, um, but I'll, I'll, I'll tell you anyway. Uh, the Board of Appeals, which town council has designated as the, um, special permit authority in this case, shall consider the following preferred qualities in addition to the special permit criteria of section seven-four-three. A, whether the proposed hotel will provide retail, restaurant, or other commercial uses on the ground story that will help create a pedestrian-oriented public realm activated by multiple commercial uses, whether as amenity accessory uses or in separate leasable spaces on the same lot. So that kind of goes, Carol, to your question. B, the quality and standards of the proposed hotel.
Sorry, why would this be? Sorry, I didn't, I gotta interrupt. Why, why would this be on the zoning board of appeals and not planning board?
I, I don't, I can't answer that question.
I mean, I, to me, just reading that, it screams planning board, not zoning board of appeals.
No, I would agree with that.
All right, so I think we need to tell council to give us the legal reason why it is on the Z E B A. Otherwise, it should be under planning board.
Yeah, it may be that, uh, council is not familiar with how many special permits that we have that are within the planning board's domain. A lot of towns don't really have the planning board involved in a lot of special permits and some do. And then finally, C, the proposed hotel's potential to activate and draw users to or collaborate with other commercial and non-commercial uses within the town. So again, I think these are fairly simplistic. I had a much longer list. Uh, I think they keep, they cut out maybe eight of what I put in there. But, um, if you have any interest, I can send you what I had previously before council took a look at this, um, if you're interested. But, yeah, uh, at the very least, I think, uh, sub subsection B is, it doesn't even make any sense. So. Any, any further thoughts on this section?
Ara?
This is special permit, and I'm not sure if, uh, design and site plan review should be added to the special permit cases. There are some by rights, but whenever it's a special permit, a design and site plan review would be a good way of sort of looking into the entire project, including the landscaping and everything else. Whereas the special permit does not, in our bylaw, does not include any landscaping, traffic mitigation, all those stuff. It's only suggested.
So we needed to find special permit for purposes of hotels to include the criteria of design, site, plan, review in our, in our bylaws.
I believe that would be very helpful, thank you.
We want, we want full entitlement authority. Uh, I think, Chris, this would be a good time to open up to public comment for those that have stayed, that listened to this. Got a wonderful discussion and review, but there's only literally three people left. Four. So Judith, Doug, Bill, or Ira, do you, uh, want to raise your hand and make any comments regarding the hotel? And by the way, we're not closing it out tonight, but you, from tonight's discussion, do you raise your hand if you want to make any comments? That's a no for now. Okay, so it's almost nine-thirty. Is that everything for the hotels?
It is.
All right. And then we had the other three bylaw revisions that we already reviewed that you circulated. I think what we need to do is, we, we still have the public notice and we can continue everything to the next meeting, right? You can continue our discussion?
We can. Can I make a suggestion that we could probably knock, uh, six D out of the park pretty quickly, like ten seconds?
Bring it, sure.
Okay, great.
Well, I'm gonna start by stopwatch, you tell me when.
I will definitely do that. I'm gonna share my desktop again. And it's this section right here where the only change is in the title. Uh, instead of, uh, single and two-family dwellings in the general residence, zoning districts, we had enlarged and reconstructed. This is it.
Why reconstructed versus renovation? Because reconstructed speaks to framing?
Ara, do you want to handle that?
You want me? You want me?
I disagree with the way it's written. Because the whole, my whole purpose of adding the word new is new construction. So it wasn't enlarged means any time there's an addition to any G R district. That means like, you know, it's gonna go through this process. And my whole idea that all these requirements initially were, the intent was for new structures and they weren't for any small additions, small meaning like, you know, anything more than three-hundred square feet or less. And enlarged would be reconstructed is maybe it means new building. But again, the enlarged, the word enlarged, I don't know why town council thinks that it's here. But my intention was to add the word new, single and two families, meaning that, you know, anyone having any, just an addition up to three-hundred square feet or more than three-hundred square feet, they go to the board of appeals or the planning board, which is all encompassed under the other sections. And this section was written for the purpose of new buildings. Because if you go over here, it says like the doors have to be facing the street.
So maybe, um, maybe town council, maybe town council just misunderstood the intent.
Yes, I disagree.
Was being more, uh, constricting. Uh, if you're saying that was meant to be new, maybe, maybe town council didn't understand what new meant. New, new, is it new as in you have an existing asset and you demo it and you build new? Or new meaning, like, so is that defined?
Well, I mean, uh, it's, we can add the definition. No, I mean, they had, they had inside, uh, single and two-family dwellings in the general residence dwelling district. All I wanted to add was the word new, single and two-family dwellings, meaning new meaning, yes, totally reconstructed. Tear down the existing building to the ground and build a new one. That was my intention and we could have added the definition, but this, basically this, uh, in section one-point-five, A, also it says alterations and expansions. That alteration is what I eventually would like to be removed because alteration means even if someone is adding a small landing or a small roof over landing is an alteration. That's why they're going to the board of appeals. Anyway, later.
Again, we want to, I get it, we want to simplify it. So can we, can, can you guys go back to town council and tell them what your intent was to go with new?
Yes.
We will do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just wanna, we obviously want to simplify it. Okay, so that's one down. Go away, does anyone have any comments on that? I, I, I'm sorry. Is there anyone to have any comments on that?
By, by new, um, you still mean that they can keep the original foundation? That there's an existing structure that's torn down? You want a new foundation, okay.
New means they tear down the existing building totally and they're gonna. We do have, in our bylaw that says if the replacement is with the existing footprint, uh, footprint and existing volume. Let's say like a building burned down and they want to replace the existing with the exact same. That's allowed by rights, so we do have that section. So if they're gonna remove a building, now if they're gonna play a game and sort of leave me a small piece of foundation or something and, uh, like a loophole, I'm gonna say, you know what, this is new. So if ninety percent, basically, if it's, with my understanding, anything more than eighty, eighty-five percent, ninety percent, that means it's totally new and well, I'll put it in the definition to make sure that, you know, it's all clear. But again, that section was initially written for the purpose of new buildings and to give it a character of what the town would like to see in new buildings. And it was not intended for rear addition, a side addition, addition, or a second-floor addition. And.
Okay.
The complaint is, the complaint is from the neighbors. I mean, not the applicants themselves. When we issued the permit, the neighbor is coming and saying, well, under six D, they had to meet this criteria over here. And I'm puzzled that, well, that's not what it means. But then again, I was having difficulty, that's why I would like to add the word new, meaning new construction, total new construction, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jeff, I lied about ten seconds.
All right. What? What I would like to do is continue the public, do we need to make a motion to continue the public meeting till February twenty-seventh?
Date certain, yes, and it's a public hearing, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue the, uh, potential upcoming zoning changes, the public discussion in forum through our next meeting, February twenty-seventh.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, um, any updates on cases, planning board projects, or committee reports? There, you don't need to give us the M B T A one, I think we had that this, did pretty well this evening, so don't put, don't put the Zoom hand up. Taylor, Renee, I think you're both on some committees, any updates? Carol?
I'll have an update from the Community Preservation Committee, probably at the next meeting. Our next meeting is on fourteenth and we're looking at, um, doing some prep for spring town meeting at that one.
All right. If there isn't any other, uh, business to discuss or otherwise, um, on the twenty-seventh, we will have another M B T A advisory committee update. We will have the meeting minutes review. So Ara, when the meeting minutes are sent out or when everyone gets the meeting minutes, go ahead and review them and give your comments back to Ara, so we can review the final version at the meeting. And what I'd like to do, Chris, is give, well, we'll see what works with the M B T A, but definitely want to, for the other three zonings and hotels, you know, give us at least another hour, hour and twenty minutes to review all that stuff, okay? Because when, when is our threshold? When's our cutoff? Marsh?
We, the, the cutoff is the, the, the closing of the warrant. So, you know, technically, we, we could probably go as far as the printing of the warrant, but typically it's the closing of the warrant. I have that date on the, the sheet that I sent along to you. I don't have that in front of me right now, but it's, it's coming up fairly soon. I believe it is in March sometime.
Let's review our timeline as a first order of business at the, on the meeting on the twenty-seventh, so that we can, so I can, I can manage the meeting time.
All right.
All right, I make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Have a great evening. Andy, thanks for joining from Denver. Take care.